The time is now six thirty-two. I'm gonna call to order tonight's meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board. As usual, anybody that speaks to the board, please make sure your microphones are turned on and to speak clearly into them. Also, please introduce yourself before you have to tell us what you have to say. The next planning board meeting is currently scheduled for April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room. Uh, before I move on, uh, Ms. Tracy Moore and Tracy, I'm gonna put you into a voting position for Neil Anketell. Mr. Disco, I'm gonna put you into Mr. Best's voting position. Given that is, you do not have to run the meeting unless you want to, because you have way more. Next, Planning and Zoting Administrators Report. Robert, what do you have for us tonight?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? Thank you very much. No, we're already moving. Onto item number three, the Consent Agenda. You know what thing we have on it tonight? Go ahead, please. Motion made by Ms. Christensen, seconded by Ms. Healy. Any questions, Mr. Disco?
I was just seconding.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? That's six zero zero to pass a consent, the Consent Agenda. Next is Agenda Item Number Four, which is S.J. Torres as the applicant and Orin H. Connell Family Trust as the owner. This is continued review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to permit a variety, a variety of temporary event uses on-site. The parcel is located at four fifty-four Daniel Webster Highway, in the C-two general commercial, Aquifer Conservation Elderly Housing and Town Center Overley Districts. That's tax map five D dash four, lot fifty-four. This is case planning board number two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-six. This item is continued from the December sixth and December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and January seventeenth, February twenty-first, and March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, planning board meetings. Robert, what do you have for us on this item?
This applicant has requested a continuance for two weeks out to April eighteenth. Staff has no issues with that. Sounds like they're in the final stages of wrapping up a letter of support from the school district for the parking situation.
Thank you, Robert. Do I hear a motion?
Also move that, uh, we grant a continuance of the public hearing to the April eighteenth. Planning Board meeting as requested, but no further notice to a butters, and that's it.
Can you be out your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Want me to do it again? You didn't hear me?
I'm sure it picked up on my mic. Motion made by Ms. Christensen, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Disco. Any further discussion? All in favor of the continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? That's six zero zero to continue that item. Item number five is McDonald's USA LLC as the applicant and CP Merrimack LLC as the owner. This is continued review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan to reconfigure the existing single-order-point drive-thru with a dual-order-point configuration. The parcel is located at nine Dobson Way in the C-two general commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. That's tax map four D, lot zero five four dash oh three. That's case number Planning Board, two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-seven. This item is continued from the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, January seventeenth, February twenty-first, and March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, planning board meetings. Robert, what do you have for us on this item?
This applicant is also requesting a two-week continuance to the eighteenth of April. They did submit some revised information, but it was too late to go out for department for, uh, review, so we requested them to push two weeks.
Thank you, Robert. Board members, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Dano, do we hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Healy. Any further discussion? All in favor of the continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? That's six zero zero to continue item number five. Onto item number six, that's Mast Road LLC as the applicant and owner. This is continued review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan to permit a contractor's yard. Parcel is located at Crow's Nest Circle in the I-one industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map two D, lot twenty-one dash oh two, case number Planning Board, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh nine. This item is continued from the March seventh and March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, planning board meetings. Robert, what do you have for us on this item?
Just by way of summary, this applicant was last before you on March seventh, and at that time, the board had requested them to do a couple of things. One was to note on the plan a complete list of activities that they were proposing to take place on-site, because there was a little vague at the original hearing. And two was to obtain some sort of correspondence from DES that outlined whether any of the proposed activities would need any special permitting through the state. The applicant has revised the plans to note on there what they're proposing to do. Uh, in that, staff does note that the note includes the language "including but not limited to," so staff has requested and has proposed a condition of approval if the board were to feel that it's appropriate, uh, that that wording be limited, so as to not give them full access to whatever they wanted to do indefinitely. Um, the other is the correspondence from DES. Ultimately, in summary, um, says that in general, none of the stuff they're doing needs any special permitting. The only caveat to that would be if they are looking to do anything with the treated concrete, painted concrete, as we've kind of discussed last time, um, which I think the applicant had said they did not intend to do, so we'd just like that further clarified on the plan. The last thing is what staff's comment was, uh, the applicant's proposing to store some salt on the site. Um, the site is located in the Aquifer Conservation District, and while we don't necessarily prohibit that activity from occurring there, we think it makes sense that it would be in some sort of permanent enclosure as opposed to just on the ground. Outside of that, um, I would turn it over to the applicant to hear their presentation.
The applicant, please introduce himself and tell us what you have.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer.
Yes.
Pull it closer. Any better? You got it. My name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer at Hayner Swanson, Inc., doing business at Three Congress Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. Tonight representing Mast Road LLC, and that's Jeff Lynch, who's with me here this evening. Um, as Robert mentioned, this is a continuation of a case that was originally heard on March seventh. And if you weren't there that evening, uh, we're talking about a sixteen-acre piece of property that's located off of Mast Road in the southeast part of Merrimack. Um, and our client intends to use about two acres, uh, for a contractor's yard, and we were seeking waiver of full site plan approval, uh, which was granted, uh, on Feb-, uh, on March seventh. Um, and Robert provided a very ample recap of the events since then, where we resubmitted drawings, um, and in advance of tonight, uh, Robert has issued what I thought was quite a thorough staff report with some recommendations. Uh, I would like to address quickly five quick points, and I'll be very brief, uh, Mr. Chairman. On sheet one, uh, of Robert's, uh, recommendations, uh, he asks us to reword note five to, uh, remove "including but not limited to," and our client is, uh, in agreement with that removal. Next point, on sheet two of four, uh, Robert asks that salt's, uh, stockpiles be stored in a permanent enclosure. Our client is comfortable with that, and he's okay with that item as well. Point number three, uh, sheet two of four, uh, as requested, we did provide communications from New Hampshire DES indicating that leaf yard, virgin wood, asphalt, brick, and concrete are permit exempt. They are allowed to be used on-site. Uh, there are certain best management practices that they suggest we use, and of course, we would follow those. Um, so, uh, we are certainly okay, uh, with, with, with that submittal back to the staff. Uh, point four, Robert on sheet two, uh, requests that we, uh, embolden note five by saying painted or otherwise treated asphalt, brick, or concrete materials are prohibited. Our client is fine with making that change. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, Robert, uh, has outlined nine precedent conditions, uh, for possible recommendation for approval and two subsequent to conditions. Uh, we reviewed those with our client, and we're okay with all those conditions, so. Um, you sent us away with two things. I think we, we responded. We didn't entirely get there, Robert. He asked us to wordsmith a couple notes, which we're happy to do, and I'm confident that the conditions that he's outlined are, are addressable. So that's our presentation this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Petropolis. Uh, board members, already gone through your packet. This has already been, uh, waived for this full site plan. We are only looking at a conditional approval tonight. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Disco, please.
Just one thing, uh, you mentioned that there would be a structure of some kind on the site to, uh, shield the salt from rainwater infusion. I don't see that on the plan. Is that something you're going to add to the plan?
Yes. Yes, we will. If we're successful this evening, we will work with Robert to, uh, go through his conditions, and there's always a little bit of back and forth, but we will show that structure on our plan.
You will show it. Okay, thank you. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? None. Uh, Mr. Petropolis, I, I myself don't have any questions. You've already dealt with staff, and it sounds like you're pretty, uh, amiable to
Right.
their requests. With that being said, do I hear a motion?
I will make motion.
Public comment.
Yes, there is specific wording.
Yeah.
Public comment.
I always forget the public comment. Hold off on that for a second. Mr. Disco, my apologies. Uh, the time is now six forty-three. I'd like to open up the forum to any member of the public that wishes to step forth and speak on this agenda item. Not seeing any. I'm gonna close the public hearing at six forty-three. Mr. Disco, please, go ahead.
Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to find that with the granted waiver of full site plan review and the recommended conditions of approval by the staff, the site plan meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary. And further, to grant conditional final approval to the site plan subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated March twenty-eighth, which I think this is, uh, one, March twenty-nine,
Correct.
uh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made by Mr. Disco, seconded by Ms. Christensen. Robert, did you get all that? Any discussion in regards to the motion? Not seeing any. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? That's six zero zero in favor of the motion. Thank you, Mr. Petropolis. Next item on the agenda is item number seven. That's Bill Lestauska, Bill Lestauka as the applicant and William
Lestauka.
Lestauka. What did I say? Lestauka. Bill Lestauka as the applicant and William P. Lestauka Revocable Trust and Joan A. Lester Revocable Trust as the owners. This is review for acceptance and consideration of a consolidation, lot line adjustment, and four lot subdivision resulting in a total of two new residential building lots. The parcels are located at eighty-eight, ninety, and ninety-four Amherst Road in the R-one and R-two residential by soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts. That's tax map four C, lots four fifty-eight through four sixty, case planning board number two thousand and twenty-three dash twelve. Robert, what do you have for us on this item?
Uh, just to kind of summarize for the board quickly, this application is proposing a consolidation lot line adjustment and ultimately resulting in four lot subdivision where two new residential building lots are going to result. The other two lots will have existing houses on them. In terms of waivers, the applicant's requested a waiver from section four point oh five point G of the subdivision regulations, but, uh, staff believes the board can deem this waiver unnecessary due to the language of section four point oh seven indicating that this is a minor subdivision and not all of the information typically required on a full subdivision is required on a minor subdivision plan. So assuming the board makes that finding, staff recommends that the board vote to accept the application as complete for review, and if the board feels comfortable, to recommend conditional approval.
Thank you, Robert. The applicant, please introduce themselves.
Good evening. Attorney Greg Michael on behalf, here on behalf of the Lester Revocable Trust and Mr. Lestauka in regards to the applicative hearing that was just described to you by Robert.
Essentially, what this is, and it, I've, I've put this up, and I, I put the boundary of the lot that would, the lot that would dealing with in yellow. And you could see, you could, I'll start here. Up, down. This lot is sold across, up, down, around land owned by Mr. Lestauka, who owns these two lots. We're planning to consolidate those two to make this more zoning conforming. Come up around, all the way across. This is one of his relatives' lots here, four, four sixty-four has a house on it. Coming down around like this. This is not a separate lot right now. This lot here is the whole bucket of bolts, as you can see. I put in lines to kind of show you how the lots will end up. The end point for six, four sixty-four is basically this orange line. The five acres that you see, which is four sixty-three, is the purple line. Mr. Lestauka's existing lots aren't shown as anything because they're not part of this, the show tonight, only to tell you that we plan to consolidate fifty-eight and fifty-nine. This lot, as I mentioned, fifty-seven is sold. That's not part of it, leaving the balance for sixty thirteen point three acres. This large parcel with two bits of frontage. The lots are conforming throughout with the exception of the thirteen-acre lot, and we went to the zoning board of adjustment last October, I believe it was the twenty-sixth, and they gave us a frontage variance for lot four sixty. We could have put a little hook here and done something creative to create frontage, but uh, the staff and ourselves felt that didn't really make any sense, and the zoning board agreed with us, and they granted us a variance. We have plenty of frontage to access the parcel. We didn't need another fifty or sixty feet to make that happen. So that's kind of where we are. At the end of the day, we're creating three lots. One, orange. Two, purple. And three, the balance of the yellow that I've shown you. Three lots. Mr. Lestauka, I'm repeating myself, I apologize. He owns these already. They are not being, we're gonna consolidate them. I've mentioned that, but that's not part of what we're doing. The balance of these lots, size-wise, for the soil, some are severe, some are moderate, comply. Frontage on the other two lots comply. There's nothing about these that is non-conforming, which is why we ask that the, uh, three-lot subdivision be approved. Importantly, a bit of history. I don't mean to bring in history, but I think it's important. This issue, this land has been in a trust for quite some time, and when Margaret Lester passed away, she left a trust. This land was in the trust. And part of it One of the provisions was this. Upon the grantor's decease, the successor trustee, five acres, five acres, that's important when we look at the plan, shall be distributed to the grantor's son, William Lestauka, to provide for suitable storage facilities for his equipment, tools, and personal property. I will tell you that Mr. Lestauka has been using that for, you know, to store a few things for a number of years. What's the problem with this provision? You can't subdivide by will or trust. We have to come here. You can't write this down, and magically, it happens. I can assure you of that. I was a probate judge for a few years. I can tell you, that's not the way it's done. Having said that, it took a while for everybody to get on board the bus to figure out what, how this thing would lay out. And this was the area that mom knew that Bill used, so ultimately, I won't bore you with all the details. You know, a plan was developed to try and finalize and get this resolved, because this has been outstanding for years. And that's part of the reason we're here as well, is to get this wrapped up. And you can see that there was, wasn't much specificity as to where the land would be, except the area that he used to use. So I can tell you that the five acres, uh, is the area that he would need to use. Um, we think it's, the plan's a proper form. We've been to the ZBA. We would request that it be accepted and hopefully approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Uh, board members, any questions? Mr. Disco, please.
I'm glad you went over the boundaries, because I had a hard time figuring out from the plan we got.
Pardon? I did that just for you notes.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and, um, I would like a little more clarification, because some of the things you point out on your map there don't show on my map here. And um, the, uh, the lot that's on the corner of Amherst Road in Natticook has the, the little wedge on the bottom. That doesn't show on my
What wedge? What wedge on the bottom?
There's a yellow and red. Oops. It's right here, right there.
Oh, no, no, no. That's just me. That's my problem. It's not a wedge.
The lining.
It's me!
He's just trying to show you the different colors of markers, whatever.
Yeah, that's all. Where, where, you think I'd, I'd propose a wedge of land between this? Come on!
It looked like it. I thought, on your map, anyway.
No, there's no wedge. It's just, it's just me with my marker.
How the marker works.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take our class when I get done tonight, okay?
Please do. Please do. Now, then, the piece that's next going up, uh, going back on Amherst Road, uh, that lot there with a house on it, now the lot that's
Here, that's Billy's house, yeah. Lestauka's house is there.
Okay, now that is gonna be part of this big lot, or what is that gonna be part of?
I don't mean to approach it, Nelson. I didn't mark this too much because it's not part of what we're doing. He owns this lot, watch my pen, and he owns this lot.
Uh-huh.
Fifty-eight and fifty-nine.
Right.
We're gonna merge those.
Okay.
That doesn't have too much to do. We don't need to come here.
But that's not part of this.
That is not part of this, correct.
There's really not. I know it's
Later on.
Yeah, but it's, it's not really part of it. It's these two lots here, Nelson, but we don't have too much to do with this.
They're being consolidated, that is.
To one lot. That's why the yellow goes around, all the way around.
Okay. And the little lot, keep going, uh, by Amherst Road there.
This lot?
Yeah. It's, it's already been subdivided.
Gone, yeah, subdivided and gone.
Gone part of this.
Gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
You with me?
Got it. I'm with you. Thank you.
Well, that's why I marked this off, because
It's a good thing.
To try and talk about it.
It's a bit funky, yeah.
Colors makes it very difficult to
Very difficult to follow the ball with this, which is why I did what I did.
There's a dashed line running all the way through this, and I didn't know what it was. I couldn't find an identifier for it. Um, it runs, uh, I can show you.
What, the soils marking?
Is, is that a soils boundary?
I think it's a soils boundary.
I believe so, yeah. The one going right through.
I believe it's a soils boundary, Nelson.
Talking about this one, right? That guy, yeah.
I could tell you that we've had the soils looked at, and we've got enough soils to make all of this work. That, that I can tell you.
All right, and, um, let me see here, the, okay. All right, and, um, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Thank you, Nelson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Did you, if you just wanna step up to microphone and introduce yourself, look like you have something to say.
Hello, Chairman. Sorry, this is my first time.
That's okay. Introduce yourself, tell us your name, and then tell us
My name is Matthew Ashland. Thank you very much. I live up on, uh, ten Natticook. I believe this is my lot, right here. Um, how far back do you, are you going with your lot? You, you mentioned storing equipment.
Well, no, what, what, Mr. Lestauka had used this area here. Had nothing to do with this. This, this area. And he's used this in various ways for quite some time.
Yes, he has.
Yeah. We're not, there's nothing proposed there. This is just a subdivision of the land. And if it had, and if someone wanted to subdivide it further, they'd have to come back to the board.
Right.
Okay? Thank you. No, thank you.
Area he's talking about is very steep, according to this.
Pardon me?
It's steep.
Yeah, there's some, there's some slopes in the back. Oh, yeah, I, I agree, but
Geography. Uh, given that, I, I did not realize he was a member of the public. I thought he was with you, Mr. Michael.
Again, I agree. There is, there is town water there. If the sewer by some chance came through, you might be able to propose a small cluster or something. I, I, I recognize that right now it may be difficult to do much development on that acreage, Nelson. I understand that.
Just give me a second, Nelson. Might as well, since we already did it, do it officially. Uh, the time is now six fifty-seven. I'd like to open up the, uh, public hearing for this item. If anybody has anything to say on this agenda item, please step forth, introduce yourself to the board, and then tell us what you have.
No.
No, we, we can, we can get that from the notes. That was my fault. I apologize. Not seeing any members of the public that wish to speak? I'm gonna close the public hearing at six fifty-eight. Board members, any further questions, Nelson? Do you have anything further?
No further questions at this time.
Ms. Tracy, please.
Thank you. Uh, could you help me understand the timeline of, um, like, when the owner passed, when the, when the will was there? Like, how, what is this timeline, and when was that other subdivision sold, that other property sold?
When you say, when was that other property sold? Do you mean this piece here?
Yes.
Quite some time ago. I, I don't know. I mean, Batruska's back.
She's been gone a long time.
I'm just wondering why now.
Well, we've been working on this for a while.
Okay.
I mean, the trust goes back to ninety-eight.
Okay.
I mean, it's not ancient, but it's
That's when I was born, no more kidding.
But it's been a few, it's been a few years.
Okay. Um, and, and so it goes back to ninety-eight, and so you've been working on this, so what, what are, I think, because I think maybe the neighbors are looking, what are the future plans? There's no future plans right now. You're just looking to subdivide it.
Right now, tonight, April fourth, there are no plans. It's been my plan, and I got into this late in the game, to get this resolved. Okay? That's the plan. That's why we're here. There are no plans. I'm not aware of any potential sales. I'm not aware of any potential we're gonna go construct. I'm not aware of any of that. The only thing I'm aware of that isn't really totally before the board is we've gotta do the merger paperwork. That's really not part of this.
So just again, for my clarification, so what we're really looking to do is make sure that that five acres is there for the equipment?
Yeah, well, it's, it's not really for equipment. It's, I'm not here, I'm not here for a site plan. I'm just saying that Billy used to park stuff out there. His family owned all of this land for many, many, many years.
Right.
And the purpose tonight is to, to clean up the trust, which this particular plan takes care of, separates the house that currently is here, makes that conforming. I repeat, conforming. Makes this conforming, and we're left with a thirteen point three acres.
Okay.
That's what we're doing tonight.
If I'm, if I'm correct, the trust tried to do this within the trust document, but it's not allowed to be done. So you're trying to do what the trust
Attempted to do.
To do.
That, that's essentially a very correct statement. You can't, you can't subdivide by will or trust. I give you five acres of my twenty-acre farm.
Can't do that.
Okay.
Doesn't work.
Good luck.
Correct, yes.
Good luck.
So you're just trying to
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm
Make legal her wishes.
I'm trying to get this resolved.
Yeah.
And doing very well.
Ms. Healy, please.
So question for you, um, what happens with that hundred, what is it, feet? Can't see, sorry. Uh, that runs between the two, between, uh, four sixty and the four fifty-eight. Yeah, that little, yeah, what's that all about?
Did you access to that backline?
It's, it's
No, you can access it from the
It's another means of access to the five-acre parcel.
Okay, okay. So you'll have two
It evens off this parcel. A lot of this is just plain. We're doing our best to take what we have to make it all work. That's, that's the best I can tell you.
And with that being said, all the road frontages, you've already spoken to the, uh, the ZBA.
Well, yeah, I mean, this, this isn't a frontage right here.
Oh, yes, correct. I'm, I'm talking about the smaller
We, we're frontage. We're all set with our variance. We're all set.
Board members, any further questions? Not seeing any questions. Do I have a motion?
We're gonna claim something for you.
Uh, all right, I will, I think I've got the right one here. I
All right, I will, I think I've got the right one here. I make motion to find that the proposed conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary and further to grant conditional final approval to the application subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated March 31st, 2023.
Motion made by Ms. Christensen, seconded by Mr. Dano. Any further discussion on the motion? Not seeing any. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. That's 6-0-0 in favor of the motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Mike.
Thank you.
And I don't think we need any waivers, so we don't have to worry about that.
Correct. It was up the board's jurisdiction to move it. Next item on the agenda is item number eight. That's Merrimack Parcel A LLC as the applicant and Merrimack Parcel A LLC and Slate Merrimack Acquisition LLC as the owners. This is review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved mixed-use development conditional use permit, calling for the replacement of 93,720 square feet of office space, 37,400 square feet of retail, 15,800 square feet of restaurant space, and a 5,000-square-foot event center as part of Phase 2 with 178 multifamily residential units, 5,000 square feet of office space, 7,400 square feet of retail space, 8,000 square feet of restaurant space, and an increase of the 7,600 square foot of restaurant space approved as part of Phase 1, to 8,000 square feet, as well as a reduction of the 120-room hotel approved as part of Phase 1 to 110 rooms. The parcels are located at 1, 2, 3, and 4 Lexington Court and the I-2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. That's tax map 3C, lots 191-2U1-191-2U4. This is case number Planning Board 2023-05. Robert, what do you have for us on this item?
The applicant this afternoon has requested a continuance to the May 2nd meeting.
Aye.
Do we have any reason why?
Can I get a reason why? Because this has been on our agenda, and it's been kicked and kicked and kicked.
This, again, this is the first notice hearing for, the first notice for a new hearing. Reason being is staff recommended it because the applicant had requested time to meet with staff, and staff was unavailable to do so prior to the meeting.
So this was
They requested today?
A meet with staff was today? Or just in the past? They requested an appointment we could not make, is
Right, so the request came in, and actually, I don't know if you, it's kind of awkward because we don't really want to do it, but Attorney Hollis is here, and he might be able to address his request further if you want to direct it to him. But the request
Request for the continuance, or what he wanted to request from you?
The request for a meeting with staff tried to come in yesterday.
Okay.
Tim was not in the office yesterday.
Correct.
So got back and suggested that they request a continuance. So staff supports this request.
Because Tim was not available.
Correct.
Okay.
If, if we don't grant the continuance, what happens?
Then the board would have to open the hearing and discuss. However, I will note that I was asked to email the abutters and let them know that this hearing was not likely to take place, and several of them indicated that they would not show up tonight based on the knowledge that this here is being, was being continued.
Rehamting us.
Given that knowledge, I prone to approving the continuance, but if it wasn't staff's issue, we've been kicking this agenda item down the road constantly. I want to say this is what, the fourth continuance? No?
No, again, this is a brand-new hearing, so it has not been continued at all.
But prior ones have been continued.
With this project?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand what you're saying now, Robert.
It's a big project, but even so.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, move to continue to May 2nd.
With no further notice to abutters?
With no further notice to abutters.
Motion made by Ms. Haley. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Tracy. Do I hear any further discussion on the motion? Not seeing any. All in favor of the motion of continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstaining. That's 6-0-0 in favor of the continuance. Thank you very much, Robert, for that clarification. Item number nine is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Robert, board members, do we have any tonight? I have nothing. Board members?
We don't have minutes, do we? I don't think we have minutes.
Uh, we should. Yes, from
Do we? Okay.
The 21st, which is actually agenda item number 10, approval of the minutes from March 21st.
Yeah, I saw them.
I move we approve as distributed. Oh, yeah, I got them right here.
I second the motion to approve.
Motion made to accept the mission, the minutes as printed by Ms. Christensen, seconded by Mr. Disco. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? Abstaining. Myself, Robert. That is 5-0-1 to approve the minutes of the 21st of March. Agenda item number 11, adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Motion made by Ms. Christensen. Negative by Ms. Haley. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? That's 6-0-0 in favor to adjourn. Thank you very much, board members. Thank you, Robert. Please make sure to turn off your microphones.